Everybody, we're going to call to order the open session of today's Board of Directors meeting. And can I have legal counsel report on action taken in closed session?
Yes, thank you Director Wong. The Board considered seven items in closed session this evening. The first three were Health and Safety Code 32155 hearings regarding hearing on reports of quality insurance committees. There was no reportable action on those first three items. Item 5.4 was a liability claim. And the Board voted five to zero to reject the presented claim of an individual whose name is being withheld under Government Code Section 54961B. The claim was against Tahoe Forest Hospital District, among others, for damages. Item 5.5, there was no reportable action. That was another Health and Safety Code 32155 hearing. Item six, the closed session minutes for June 23 regular meeting were approved on a five to zero vote. And the medical staff credentialing recommended decisions were also approved on a five to zero vote. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much for that. Are there any deletions or corrections to the posted agenda? Seeing no one raising their hand or wanting to speak, I'll move on to 10, which is audience input. And this is a great opportunity for members of our public to address the Board on items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, because we're on Zoom, you can use the toolbar that's at the bottom. And there's an icon where you'll be able to raise your hand. If you don't want to use that or can't use that, our clerk and I will kind of scan the screen to see if anybody's raising their hand to speak. If you would choose to in the future, you can always send written comments to the clerk. They do need to be received 24 hours ahead of time. It can be by regular mail or by email. Just know that if you speak, we'd like you to give your name for the records. And also, you have three minutes to present the item that you wish to speak on. Just to let you know that we cannot respond on anything that's not agendized. But as the Chair, I can either table it for a later discussion if it's warranted or pass it on to our staff. So with that, is anybody still willing to speak? Okay, I don't see any hands going up. So then we'll move on to input from the Employees Association. And they're held to the same rules in terms of time limitation of three minutes to speak. And it has to be on something not on the agenda. Yeah, I really don't see anybody from our association. So then we'll move on to 12, which is acknowledgements. And we have two that I want to tell you about. One is that Tahoe Forest Health System has been awarded $2,348,023 in grant funding for projects to support behavioral health infrastructure, giving the health system new opportunities to address gaps in care and create sustainable improvements that better serve our country, our community. The award was delivered through the Department of Healthcare Services. And it's a program they have on infrastructure. And this funding will allow us to expand those facilities that support the behavioral health continuum of care in order to meet the growing demands for services in our rural community. So again, it's money that's going to be well used within our community with all the demands we now have for behavioral health. And our second one is a really great one, too, is that our long-term care center has earned a five-star rating for nursing homes by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid. The overall rating is based on nursing homes' performance on three sources: health inspections, quality measures, and staffing. Our staff has worked diligently over these past few years to elevate the care at our extended care center. This five-star recognition by the CMS demonstrates our continuing commitment to provide high-quality, comfort care to our long-term care residents and support for their families. And it has been a challenging past two years for our residents because of the COVID. So for our staff to get a five-star rating is applaudable. So thank you so much to the staff for all the work they've done. We'll move on to our Medical Staff Executive Committee Report. And Dr. Lane, you're going to be giving that to us.
All right. Dorothy, do you, can you put up a screen for me, please?
Oh, my dear, can you grab me? Oh, there, I have access to do so.
While Dorothy's doing that, it's awesome that we're getting money for behavioral care. We are so in need of it in this community for treatment and care of these patients. So this, we, this is a very simple report we have for this month. So privileges approvals, so pediatrics, they had minor changes where they added developmental and behavioral pediatrics is now added to the pediatric, to pediatrics and psychology. They have also added neuropsychologists, and they just clearly define what kind of training you need and what they're able to do. And these have both been approved by, so these were approved by pediatrics already. And then the next one was our quality committee. And the only change, which I think is relatively minor, is they defined a Board of Directors of that committee, of the quality committee, and that's going to include the Chair of that committee and the CMO. And so this was a, this was a pretty simple one. Any questions that I can answer?
Dr. Lane, for the pediatric, the developmental health, or behavioral health for pediatrics, do we have a pediatric, one that we're going to be looking for or have?
I'm not sure on that. Maybe Louis or Scott could answer that. I know that they had to write up the criteria on what we do, and I'm, I don't know if we're actively trying to find someone for that.
I can weigh in, Chairman Wong. Yes, we have a developmental behavioral specialist for pediatrics starting probably in October. And it's a husband-wife team, and the wife is a neuropsychologist also, starting in the October timeframe. That's what prompted these privileges for being brought up.
Well, excellent. Two of them coming. That's great. Are there any other comments from our Board?
Just a question on the definition of pediatrics is up through what age?
They go up to 18 in general.
Up to 18? And in this case, it would be 18?
Anything further? Anything from our audience? Okay, seeing no hands. Can I have a motion to approve the Medical Executive Committee Consent Agenda as presented?
This is Director Barnett. I move that we accept the Medical Executive Committee presentation.
Okay, can I have a second also?
I would second that, Alice.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Director Barnett and seconded by Director Brown to accept or to approve the Medical Executive Committee Meeting Consent Agenda.
Director Barnett?
Yes.
Director Shambly?
Yes.
Director McGarry?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
And Director Wong?
Yes. So the Medical Executive Committee Consent Agenda has been approved. Thanks so much, Dr. Lane, for your work today.
All right, thank you very much.
We'll move on to item 14, the Consent Calendar. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. Oftentimes, they're reports from our chief or some policies that have had some minor changes. But it is, anything can be pulled at the request of a Board member. So are there any of the items under the Consent Calendar wanting to be pulled by any of our Board members? Okay, I guess that leaves it to me. So I'm going to ask to pull our CNO Board Report and our Chief HR Officer Board Report. And I've contacted both of them via email about the questions I had that they might share their insight into. So we'll be covering those under item 17. But can I have a motion? Is that correct? Where's legal counsel? Is that correct? I can ask for a motion excluding the CNO Report and the CHRO Report?
Yeah, I guess the only thing to clarify is that there's no public comment on any of the consent agenda items. And after that, then you can ask for a motion.
Okay. So are there any comments from the audience regarding the Consent Calendar? Okay, seeing none. Then we can move to a motion to approve the Consent Calendar minus the CNO and CHRO Board Reports.
So moved, Dale.
I'll second, Michael.
So it's been moved and seconded, I'm sorry, it's been moved by Director Shambly and seconded by Director McGarry that we approve the calendar with the exception of the CNO Board Report and the CHRO Board Report.
Director Barnett?
Yes.
Director Shambly?
Yes.
Director McGarry?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Wong?
Yes. So the calendar has been accepted, except for the two items as mentioned. Now we'll move on to item for Board Discussion. And we're going to have a semi-annual retirement plan update by Brian Montanaz. So Brian, are you?
All right.
So for this semi-annual presentation, I'll go through the prior quarter's activities and then give a summary of the, a high-level summary of the plan. So in Q1, the Retirement Plan Committee reviewed the fund's performance of all the investments. All the funds were rated satisfactory. We reviewed the plan's assets and record-keeping to ensure accuracy reporting. No issues were found. We reviewed the SOC 1, and most people probably don't know what a SOC 1 is unless you're an auditor. It is an audit of Fidelity's record-keeping systems to make sure that the internal controls are designed to protect participants' information and the actual administration of those systems. Fidelity received an unqualified opinion, which is a good thing. The audit in the room know that. An unqualified opinion is good. And there were no exceptions that affected your plan, which is excellent. So on an annual basis, we do need to review the SOC 1. We reviewed the share classes to see if we could trade down the expenses of any of our existing investments. We are currently using the lowest-cost share class of all our investments. And we did fiduciary education, and the committee elected to utilize Fidelity's lost, missing, utilize Fidelity's service to locate missing participants. Missing participants are people that did not update their address and moved, so we get return checks, return mail, and they're out of communication. Department of Labor is very clear that we do need to put our effort to find these participants. So we elected to outsource that to Fidelity. In the second quarter, we reviewed the performance of the investments. T-Row Price was put on watch list due to a new portfolio manager and some recent underperformance due to large-cap technology. The short story here is they did not have the allocations to large-cap technology that the index had because they're a diversified mutual fund, which by law could not have the allocations that the index had. There's something called a 525 rule, if you're a diversified mutual fund. And it says that all positions that are more than 5% may not exceed 25% of the portfolio. But the top five positions, Microsoft, Apple, Amazon, Google, represented almost 40% of the index. So as they, those positions had dominated over the last 10 years, diversified mutual funds were not able to keep up with them. And now we have a new portfolio manager that's been at the helm for six months. We have a lot of confidence in T-Row Price, and the portfolio manager has experience. So we watch-listed it to see what this portfolio manager is going to do about the fund's recent performance. We reviewed the plan assets. Everything looked fine. We reviewed the fiduciary insurance, and you are all fiduciaries. The Board is our fiduciaries, as is the Retirement Plan Committee, as am I. But you folks are all covered by a $2 million policy, which is more than adequate, in my opinion. We did some fiduciary education on fiduciary insurance, what it covers, what it doesn't cover. And as I noted, you have a $2 million policy. Every six years, the IRS requires a planned document restatement to basically catch all those amendments that happened over the prior six years. As part of that, the committee elected to restate the plan's documents onto Fidelity's documents rather than the lawyer's custom documents. That'll save a couple thousand dollars each year because every time we make an amendment, we have to go back to the lawyer. So now we can use Fidelity's IRS pre-approved, meaning the IRS has already blessed the document to say it's compliant. So now we're in the process of currently restating onto Fidelity's pre-approved documents. The breakdown of the plan is of June 30. Now, please note, Q1 is a December 31 investment report. Q2 is a March 31 investment report. Those are those two quarters. As of June 30, joining T-Row Price on the watch list, we put Causeway and Invesco. I'll start with Invesco. Invesco had a larger-than-normal allocation to Russia. Russian securities are worthless, so they had to mark down a significant part of their portfolio. It was probably three times what the index was, and they just got mark-to-market at zero. This quarter, they're actually at benchmark performance, but we're going to, we're keeping it on watch list as we see how they recover from their Russian allocation. Causeway is a bottoms-up portfolio manager, meaning they're not trying to keep close to an index. They find value wherever they find value. And currently, they're finding value in Europe. They have a two-times the allocation of the index to the European economies. That caused us to put it on watch list. So we have three positions on watch list. Nothing is recommended for removal, though. This is as of June 30. The Retirement Plan Committee has not been presented with this information yet, but I wanted to give you the update as of June 30. As you know, markets have been down now. So assets in the 401A, the Employer Plan, the Employer Contribution Plan, dropped from 66.7 to 58.5 million, and all other investments remain satisfactory. The 457, which is the Salary Differral Plan for employees' money, those assets also dropped from 82.6 to 69.9 over that six-month period, and they hold the same investments. Unfortunately, participation rate is decreasing from 83.9 to 79.5. I don't have any comments or color on why that is, other than we are seeing that sort of across the board now because of COVID. Average deferral rate also decreased from 10 to 9.4. Keep in mind, every new hire gets automatically enrolled at 6%. But I think this drop has more to do with people cutting back on their savings. However, the total savings rate, the employer and employer, which did decrease from 14.3 to 14.1, is excellent. 14.1 is an adequate savings rate. To have that at a macro level for your average employee, that is a fantastic savings rate. Any questions about the work of the Retirement Plan Committee?
No one's raising their hand, Brian.
Okay. Well, then I thank you for your time, and I will let you get back to your work. I'm going to have an ice cream.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you so much for that information.
Have a nice day.
And then we have Don Penner and Elaine Sampson from Chandler Investments, and they're going to give us a report. This will be their first time visiting us, but I understand they're going to start coming annually to give us a report.
Will come whenever you want us. How's that?
Okay.
We'll, yeah, we'll just show up. But I am going to, my name is Don Penner with Chandler Asset Management for a little over 12 years, in a kind of relationship management role my entire time, and have been kind of the main point of contact for Crystal and the team as we've kind of moved forward and got your portfolio invested. Elena Sampson is relatively new to Chandler, but has a number of years' experience. I'll let her introduce herself, and then she'll walk you through, have a brief overview of where we're at with your portfolio and how it's done here over the, about 10 months or so that we've been working with you.
Thank you, Don, and thank you to the Board for having us here today. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. I would like to walk through the presentation with you, and starting really with some of the headlines from, well, actually, Don said I should give you a little bit of introduction to who I am. So I previously worked at Capital Group Companies, the parent of American Funds, for 20 years. Most recently, I was a credit analyst there for the last eight years, so really focused on the very short end of the bond market, which is what gives me excitement to work here with Tahoe Forest today. So with that, I will start the presentation. And we'll start with some of the economic highlights. If you've been hearing the news, there's been two big pieces of news in this week happening. One was the Federal Reserve, and the other was GDP that was released today. So starting with the Federal Reserve, what you heard was that the federal funds rate was increased by 75 basis points yesterday to a range of 2.25% to 2.50. And they did confirm that they will continue to increase or decrease their $9 trillion balance sheet. Chairman Powell stated that the price of future rate hikes will depend on weather and how quickly inflation starts to decline, something that they will really look at on a meeting-by-meeting basis. The market in turn was split as to whether that would mean 50 or 75 basis points in terms of the next hike in September. The next two pieces that you see on the slide are parts of the Fed's dual mandate, employment and inflation. Labor markets are strong, but wages aren't keeping up with inflation. So what you're seeing here on the page is that non-farm payrolls have added 372,000 jobs in June, with strength coming from education and health services, followed by professional and business services. Unemployment has persisted at 3.6% for the last four months. And looking forward, we at Chandler will continue to watch for changes in the labor force participation rate, as well as average hourly earnings, both as indicators of strength of the consumer and the economy. From an inflation perspective, the third set of bullet points on the page, CPI came in hotter at 9.1%. It's really weighing on the consumer sentiment and then starting to impact the discretionary spend. Looking forward, we do anticipate that the pricing pressures will be, continue to be weighed on by the Russian war in Ukraine. And most recently, I'm sure we've heard about some of the impacts of global natural gas prices. And the last thing I'll point to on the page is the economic growth. This morning, the initial Q2 GDP numbers fell to negative 0.9% at an analyzed rate for Q2. This smaller decrease than what we saw in Q1, which is what's on the page, really reflected an upturn in exports and a smaller decrease in the federal government spending. But lower housing and construction-related investment led to the negative print. So in conclusion, certainly, we're seeing risks of economic slowdown being increased, given all of the new data that we're seeing in Q2 and Q3. Moving on to bond yields. We see on the left-hand side, really a race to the top, starting with the one-year part of the curve. We saw yields have started hovering around 3%, but that has started to retrace a bit following this week's news. On the right-hand side of the page, you see an elevated yield curve. And that's really showing that the market has responded to the Fed measures, having priced in these rate increases. But at this point, what we want to point you to is that it's really important to watch the shape of the yield curve. Academics would tell you that you should look at the three-month to 10-year parts of the curve because that gives you the highest predictability in terms of whether or not there's going to be a recession coming. And that has fallen to 30 basis points and continues to compress with each rate hike. So really, levels worth watching. But market watchers, what you'll hear on Bloomberg or perhaps on the various newspapers, is that they look at the two- to 10-year parts of the curve, and that has been inverted since July 5th, now at an inversion rate of about 20 basis points. Certainly, what, not what I would consider strong economic growth at this point. But the most important thing that I point you to on this slide is really understanding that that quick increase in rates also impacts bond prices because as rates go up, the prices of bonds go down. So key point to think about as we go to the next slide. And this is your portfolio summary. Taking a breath. The duration at 2.44%, at 2.44, excuse me, I'm going to go across the page and back down. It's slightly less than the benchmark. With yields in excess of 3%, you can see that this has now increased our purchase yield to 1.09%, and that's up from 85 basis points in Q1. You compare that to LAF, that was 99 basis points at the end of Q2. The portfolio has an average quality that's the same as the U.S. government, and the maturity has a similar level at 2.66 as the benchmark. In terms of the account summary here in the middle of the page, I would point to the total mark-to-market value has declined by $811,000. And again, that's because as yields go up, bond prices go down. But there's two key points that I'd want to show you here. The income earned has increased substantially from $53,000 to $195,000. And the other point I'd want you to remember is that the market values in these prints are unrealized losses. Given this is largely a buy-and-hold portfolio, they will not be realized in the portfolio. The other parts that I want to mention are here on the page is that this is a very diversified portfolio, if you look at it from an issuer's perspective, as well as from a sector perspective. We have a majority of the portfolio in U.S. Treasuries and Agencies, which really supports the safety and liquidity mandate. And for the other issuers, like the corporate issuers, these we tend to keep at less than 2% to support diversification. From maturities perspective, I want to point out, since this is largely new monies from the hospital, we've invested a lot of the corporates out to a longer point in the curve to get the overall duration of the portfolio where we wanted. So it's not necessarily the bell curve that you would typically expect. However, what's really fortunate about this is that that meant we took advantage of those longer-dated positions, capturing yield while the curve was flat before that inversion started. So this is really helping the portfolio with those additional interest income that we're seeing. From a credit quality perspective, again, highly-rated portfolio, you see a very large chunk of the slide here at AA. That is the U.S. government's rating, is AA+ by S&amp;P, so want to point that out here. And the last part of the page here on the performance review, again, total return has two primary components: the interest component and the underlying price changes. And so I'll note that while there has been some recent underperformance, as we ask ourselves, why is that? Really, it's focused on the corporates that we have. The number of corporates, what we would say in the markets is that the spreads have widened out, which magnifies any changes in bond prices, again, larger yield, lower price, to both the upside and the downside. However, again, because Tahoe Forest is largely buy-and-hold, any of the losses that you see there are unrealized. And most importantly, I would say that the yield to date, the year-to-date, we are outperforming by 14 basis points. And when I took a look at your performance from inception, which isn't shown here on the page, you have been outperforming the benchmark by 25 basis points. So all in all, a good story to tell here to the Board today. And I'll stop for any questions.
Any questions from our Board? We're still swirling in the, in the numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry. A lot of numbers that I threw out at you. Yes, there's a lot. But the bottom line is good things are happening with the interest that's coming into your portfolio.
Right. I should mention, too, that Mary Brown and I, Finance Committee, met with Don and Elaine, is it Elena?
Elena, yes.
Elena, and reviewed this in depth just, what, a week ago, so.
Any comments from our audience? Well, thank you so much, Elena and Don, for your presentation, and keep those base points going.
Alice?
Yes.
Alice, this is Mary. I do have a question. You know, we were talking at the Finance Committee meeting about how much information to give the Board with regard to the about how much information to give the board with regard to um, the, the annual report. And I'm curious if any of the board members want more information um, in the future, or what they would like to be hearing.
And if I could just add, the report that Finance Committee sees is about 35 pages long. So we, we do have as much detail as you would like to see, but we did try to condense it down into manageable information um, that we could cover at a relatively high level, but still hopefully allow the board members to feel informed. So, but again, if you'd like to see more or less, please let us know.
And really what Elena's trying to do is, is kind of pick out some of the, kind of the, the most pertinent, the most timely information to, to share with you.
And I think she did well with that, too. Uh, again, I'd like to uh, just emphasize that when we look at the cost value of roughly 80 million and yet current values of 7, uh, 76 million. Uh, again, the, the key here, as far as I'm concerned, is unrealized losses. Uh, and you know, it's unlikely that we're in any near future, we're going to have to uh, sell some of these underperforming and realize those losses. I don't see it happening. Uh, and I think Crystal would agree with that.
And the, and what, again, what's caused that is the rise in interest rates and um, over a, a, a intermediate, intermediate period of time, or not too long of a time, those, those higher interest rates that you will be receiving, or those yields that you're receiving, will begin to offset some of these losses. And uh, I mean, I, I think you can look at this as some, some, a, a, a little bit of short-term kind of pain and volatility for a long-term gain.
So when we hold some of these Treasuries to maturity, um, we get the full value of the, plus the interest on that, and then presumably we'll be buying in at a higher interest rate um, on the subsequent Treasuries. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And what's actually interesting, having come from a mutual fund background, is sometimes those shorter-dated Treasuries. And if you see here on the, the right-hand side of this chart, you have about 20% of your portfolio that'll be maturing within the year. And oftentimes, because some of the mutual fund companies need those short-dated, you could actually get a premium if we were to sell them. So not only would you get it at par, Director Chamberlain, you could potentially get even a slight premium to that number.
Oh, interesting.
If we sold it. But we.
Okay.
Mary, to address your question, I think the, the level of information here was, was good from, from my vantage point. Uh, I mean, everything is fairly consistent with what you would expect with, with, what's going on in the, uh, in the world today. Uh, my only request would be if there was something, uh, Crystal, and then you know, the 35 pages that was out of the ordinary, um, that that would of course be presented and, and discussed in greater detail. But to the extent it's consistent with what's going on, uh, this level of detail was fantastic.
Yeah, and I agree with Michael in that this is our first report. So it's a matter of getting used to how the reports are set up and what the information is, because as we see them more often, that indeed we'll be able to maybe look at things a little bit differently, a little bit deeper maybe, or like Michael said, just those things that are going awry and what we're going to do about it. Great. So thanks for the question, Mary. And again, Elena and Don, thank you so much for the information. And we'll see you in a year, if not sooner.
It'd be nice to be with you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
On item 16, we have our Chief Financial Officer, Crystal Betts, is going to um, review and consider, ask us to consider a resolution setting the tax rate. So Crystal, do you want to go ahead and start?
Uh, I am happy to do so, and I, I might spend a little bit more detailed time this go-around since, for Director Barnett, it's, it's probably your first pass at um, the rate setting for our GO bonds. So um, if the other board members would bear with me.
Sure, sure.
So, great, thank you. Um, so way back in 2006, when we were looking at um, a number of construction projects at the, the hospital, uh, we had taken the temperature of the community to see if they would support a general obligation bond. And a general obligation bond, the debt service payment on that bond is funded through property tax revenues that are restricted purely for that use. And so we did go to a vote of our district community members to see if they would support and fund 98 and a half, uh, $98.5 million bond for us to do necessary construction projects um, on the campus. They unanimously passed that, and so from that point on, uh, we did issue the bonds in three increments. And each of the three series of bonds um, has a debt service requirement that goes with it. And then uh, what we do is we receive the assessed values from the county every year. And based upon those assessed values, it's purely mathematical. What is the rate for 100,000 of assessed value do we need in order to make the next year's debt service payment? Because they're due on August 1st. So we collect it during the year and then we make our debt service payment. So back when the analysis was completed by our financial advisor, we had some pretty phenomenal um, property tax uh, increases year over year. So you can see back in 2000, 2001, up until the time we actually um, did the vote, we had assessed values increasing easily more than 8% a year, year over year. And so when uh, we did the projections to see or tell our, our taxpayers when we put the measure out for vote, one of the things we tried to inform them of is what is the maximum rate per 100,000? Will the taxpayer pay at any point in time um, with the bond? And we had to make some estimates and projections, and we used what we felt was actually on the lower end, an 8% growth pattern beyond what we already knew, because we were seeing 13, 16, 10, 9. We were seeing percentages way in excess of 8%. So that is what was used in the calculation way back in the day. So based upon that analysis, we had informed the community that we approximated that the maximum a community member would pay would be $18.76 per 100,000 of assessed value. Well, then guess what happened? The housing market crashed. And so we actually started seeing declines in the assessed values back when the housing market crashed. And then of course, we had some recovery. So um, over the previous years, back when we had these declines, the Board of Directors had decided instead of putting the full burden onto the community members um, to make the debt service payment through property tax revenue, that it would be supported by some operational revenues as well. And so back in these years, not only did we collect property tax revenues to make the debt service payment, but the hospital contributed some of its own operational revenues to support making that debt service payment. But since then, we've seen some decent growth, moderate growth, and, and held this last uh, assessed values that were uh, provided to move out of counties, which now show that they're projecting a 9.7% growth, one of the highest ones we've seen um, since the housing market uh, crashed, except for this 15, 16 year. So the bottom line is tonight, you are being asked to set the rate, uh, the amount per 100,000 that we will need to make the debt service requirement for the 22, 23 fiscal year, which is $5.4 million rounded. Based upon the actual assessed values the county gave me, if, um, well, let me back up. Um, each year, they give us the estimate of the assessed values, and then we actually collect the property tax revenues. And sometimes those revenues can be higher than what we projected. And so in this case, we, we do have some dollars in reserve. Once we make our August 1st, 2022 payment, we will have about $660,000 in the reserve account that we can hold and use for the 2022, 23 debt service payment of $5.4 million. Now, if we choose not to use any of the reserves and just keep it held in that account, the calculation will be $19.34 per 100,000 to make the full $5.4 million payment. So this is the maximum rate that you can tell the counties to collect on our behalf. However, because we have those reserves, we can use a portion of those reserves to reduce that amount. So here you'll see that if we use no reserve at all, we would be $19.34, and we would use 100% of the $660,000. I've given you alternatives if, if you're not comfortable having zero reserve, which I'll tell you right now, I am not comfortable using the entire reserve. So there's, there's one injection of my opinion. Um, so I've given you calculations as if we used 75% of the reserve, um, or sorry, we used 25% of the reserve and retained 500,000. 50%, 75%, 85% or 100%. Um, so if we use the full 660,000, the rate would be $16.98. If we use 555,000 of the reserve, or 85%, it would be $17.34. And here's 75% and 50%. Over the last couple of years, I have recommended, I'm using 75% of the reserve and um, retaining a, a 25% roughly in the reserve account for future use. Um, but honestly, this is a board decision, and I've given you alternatives with a recommendation. So my recommendation would be that we set the rate at $17.57 per 100,000, which will generate $4.9 million of property tax revenue. Um, and we will use 491,000 of the 660,000 reserve, leaving 168 for next year. And that we pass a resolution uh, directing the counties to set the rate on the property tax statement to the taxpayers in order to collect that amount of money. So um, everything in this calculation is purely mathematical. Um, and the, the only opinion is how much reserve do you want to use? And so that's where it lends to discussion for the Board of Directors.
Okay.
Okay, I, since I'm the, so I do have a couple of questions. Did we make a commitment to the public basically not to uh, raise their assessed valuation to more than, what, $18.16 or something like that?
No, uh, the $18.76 was always provided to the public as an estimate, because there was no way we could predict the future. However, the board has tried to honor as much as possible staying within the $18.76 per 100,000.
But Bob, the amount of money that we collect from the taxpayers remains the same. The rate may change, but it only changes in, when the assessed value changes. So assessed value goes down, the rate goes up, but the dollars remain the same. Does that make sense?
No.
You still have to collect, eh, eh, as, as Crystal says, a certain amount of $5,420,000 from the taxpayers, and.
But the amount we raise through the uh, the assessed valuation is gonna, the, the net amount is gonna differ depending upon what percent we apply. So if we apply the uh, 1875, we get, let's see, 500,000, is that right?
Yeah, so if, if we set the rate at the 25% reserve use, that would be $18.75 per 100,000, leaving 500, oh, just over 500,000 in our reserve account, which would be pretty darn close to the estimation that we originally gave the taxpayers.
Right, right, so anyway, that, that's the number I'm kind of drawn to. I don't have a strong opinion on this. I know you would uh, recommended a slightly lesser rate. Um, what, what are the benefits of using the, the lesser rate and using more of our reserve?
So you have to remember that these are dollars we've already collected from our taxpayers.
Yes.
And we try to utilize as much of that as possible, since we've already collected it from them. Um, I would hate to charge our taxpayers more unnecessarily when we have reserve dollars, which they've already paid. So this, this isn't hospital dollars we have in reserve. These are taxpayer dollars who have already funded part of the debt service payment that we have in reserve.
What's the reason to have a reserve? Why not pay it out to zero every year?
Because you got to remember, the assessed values are still basically an estimate. So I, the counties give us the best numbers that they have. And at the collection rate, we expect to get what we collect. But if for some reason we have a slight shifting one way or the other, this helps limit the exposure of the district from having to pull dollars out of operations. Because no matter what, we have to make the debt service payment.
Okay.
And Bob, just to put the whole thing in perspective too, um, we're talking about the difference between uh, of a, of a dollar per 100,000 of assessed value. So you got a million-dollar house, we're talking $10.
Yeah.
It's all pretty small, pretty small in, in actual numbers. Um, I, you know, as Crystal knows, we've had, how many years, Crystal, have we had this argument, you and I? I, you know, I have the utmost respect and admiration for Crystal, but I've disagreed with her for years um, on how much of the reserve to use. Um, I, I, I felt we should hold more of the reserve back um, in anticipation of another huge drop in assessed values. Um, but I, you know, this year, as I, as I told her the other night, when we were at this uh, a hospital event, that, that the, the assessed values have been so significantly, um, even for the last 10 years, um, that uh, I, I would acquiesce to the, her recommended amount.
Well, you get outvoted, Dale.
So what'd you say, Crystal?
I said, and plus you get outvoted by your other board members.
Here, but no, two years, I got one board member to go along with me, but I could never get the second one.
So if we are expecting, I guess in, in my own mind, um, there's a, there's a chance there's some rough times ahead. Like next year, financially, I think for, for people, just from an income standpoint, I think housing might retract a little bit. Uh, if, if we were under the impression that, you know, next year could be a, a more challenging financial year, would we want to keep more reserve? Am I, am I understanding the, the balance correctly?
Yes and no. So what we're kind of starting to see now is a market downturn. Market is not assessed value. So those are two different things. And usually it takes a while for the assessed value to decline much later than the market value does. So we allow the market to kind of do its fluctuations, and hopefully it recovers, which doesn't affect assessed value. So at this point, we haven't seen enough of a market downturn that I think would affect the assessed values that quickly.
And Dale, to your point, uh, the difference between the extremes of 1698 and 1934 on a million-dollar house is $20, you know, $24.
$20, yeah. It's, it's almost negligible. Yeah. The only people who get hurt by us um, reserving more and not using the reserve is those who sell and move out of the area. Because they take advantage of the fact that we've collected, already collected some money from them. They could ask for a refund of their $15. I, I, I mean, it's peanuts, really, yeah, and individually, anyway.
And I, my recommendation is really just that. It's a recommendation. And as you've already discussed, the variances between using all the reserves or no the reserves is not a huge number. Um, but I do believe there should be a certain amount left in reserve for, for that small adjusting case for the next year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think the public lens will also see it, and they'll appreciate the fact that it hasn't gone up, and maybe it's going down. But again, just depending on how much we do, we could get some back talk from the public that, you know, look at all the money they have, and we didn't get anything back. And every year, they've kept that amount that they pay per hundred thousand pretty much the same, at least in my tenure here.
Yeah, well, the public doesn't always remember, unfortunately, is that we have refinanced on three occasions, these three bond tranches, I think they call them, and in the long run, saved the community millions of dollars by refinancing. I think that's grossly underappreciated.
Yeah, yeah.
And just a reminder, last year's rate was nineteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
So going down to seventeen is, yeah.
Yeah.
I will move approval of the recommended.
Let me ask the audience if there's any comments from them.
Certainly.
So are there any comments from our audience, you homeowners out there?
Yeah, my comment would be to get it right on the tax bills this time. Just see that the county gets it right.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question at the end of this, was how do we make sure that they bill correctly?
That was a nightmare, let me tell you.
Talk about putting a spotlight on it.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so I have not heard anything from our audience in regards to what, the board continues to have comments, but I wondered if someone could give us a motion regarding this resolution? And if you have your screen open, there is a written recommendation for the motion.
I would move approval of the recommended rate of, and I don't have it here in front of me, seventeen?
Thousand fifty-seven cents.
Fifty-seven. Yeah. Seventeen fifty per, excuse me, seventeen fifty... Where are we?
Okay, here, I'll read the resolution, I'll read the motion, and then you can say something to it.
For a hundred thousand.
Set the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three physical year go bond tax rate, hundred thousand at seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents, and utilize approximately seventy-five percent of the reserves to fully cover twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three's debt service requirements of five thousand, I'm sorry, five million, four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. And that would leave us a reserve of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents in reserve.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion, and now I need a second.
I would second the motion.
Thank you, so it's been moved by Director Shamlin, and seconded by Director Brown, that this suggestion motion be passed. So can you give us a roll call vote? And you've got the...
Yes.
Director Shamlin?
Yes.
Director McGary?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Wong?
Yes. So the resolution has passed. Thank you so much, Crystal, for all of that information. I know you said it was for Bob, but we always can have a review of it and appreciate what you've done over the years and what the system has done. So thank you again for that.
Alice, excuse me, Dale here, before we leave that, Crystal, has the county done a real postmortem on what their mistake was? And God, it would be awful to repeat that thing. How do we know they're gonna get it right this time?
So even on their own form, it states to put the dollar amount per one hundred thousand. It is not the district's responsibility to convert that to how they portray it on the property tax statement. That is the county's responsibility. So every year, I send the exact resolution that you guys just approved that gets signed to both counties informing them of the rate per one hundred thousand. It is their responsibility to convert that on the property tax statement. So, and that is what we had a few too many extra zeros added that made the rate much lower and made to have three hundred plus phone calls.
For those of you who don't know, shortly after this error was found, I called Placer County, and I said, I'm a bit confused. I was gonna pay my taxes online, and it shows one amount, and yet I got a tax bill that shows a different amount. And the young lady that I talked to on the phone said, oh, that's because the hospital made a mistake. And of course, I was flabbergasted, and I said, you know, I really resent you saying that. I said, I happen to know for a fact that the hospital did not make the mistake that you guys did. I said, mistakes are made, I can accept that, but to pass it off to us is unconscionable, as far as I'm concerned. And I immediately called our supervisor, Cindy Gustafson, and had a conversation with her, and that was quickly rectified. But I just wanted to let you all know that that took place. It was not pretty.
So Dale, are you suggesting that we need to follow up with them to make sure?
That's what I guess I'm saying, Bob, thank you, yeah. Is it, you know, maybe a phone call?
Crystal, do you want to referee these two?
Yes. That Placer County will be reaching out to me to validate, and I will be doing a calculation. Nevada County did just fine, they got it right, it was just Placer County. So I'm sure they're going to be much more cautious this year because I know they don't want to go through it again, and I know I don't want to go through it again.
This is the first time it ever happened, right? I mean, this was, it was a mistake.
All right, and then I understand, Michael, McGary, you're gonna sign up papers because there was a quick turnaround to the counties. So you'll be doing that tomorrow.
I'll be in the office tomorrow.
Great. And thank you again, Crystal, for your work. Okay, so we're gonna move on to seventeen, and those are the items that I requested to be, to pull further insight into them. And I'm happy to see Jan Ayuda, the Chief Nursing Officer, is here. And her report, she identified that there was a large meeting in Reno to promote... No, I'm sorry. There was a large meeting in Reno with hospital administrators, et cetera, et cetera, to focus on staffing for now and the future. And I thought it was vague enough, but it's important enough that I wanted to hear some details, whether they had some recommendations, whether there was just discussion. And so Jan has been very kind to come in and tell us the highlights. And that's what she's only gonna bring, is the highlights of the meeting.
Yes, thank you, good evening. Yes, so Trent Faust, who's our new Director of Acute Care Services, attended this meeting down in Reno, which was on July thirteenth. And it was mostly all of our partners in Nevada, so it was all the urban and critical access and rural hospitals throughout Nevada that attended this meeting. And what it was, is really to discuss the staffing crisis. We all knew that nursing was gonna become, or have a shortage. We knew this back in, I don't know, twenty eighteen, nineteen, well before the pandemic, due to the baby boomers retiring. Unfortunately, COVID has forced that to come a little quicker. And I know at Tahoe Forest, we always felt like we were very fortunate, very lucky. How could we see this happening to us? Everybody wants to come work for Tahoe Forest, which is true, but we are now feeling that pinch of this shortage. And so, for instance, one of the things that was discussed, like at Renown, they have over a thousand positions open right now. Three hundred and seven are RN positions. The VA has over a hundred RN positions open. St. Mary's has over a hundred. Critical access facilities throughout Nevada have openings for four hundred and sixty-six RNs. So as you can see, we've got to think outside the box, and we've got to start thinking outside the box now. So a lot of what we have been doing and prior to Trent even attending this meeting, we had been discussing the last couple of months that we need to grow our own. So, you know, we always hire people at Tahoe Forest with, you know, at least two years' experience. We're probably gonna have to go back to hiring the new grads. And so how do we do that? How do we grow program? How do we make sure people are trained appropriately and they're very, you know, and they are safe for our patients? So that is what we're going to start looking at, is doing that type of a program. We already have one OB nurse who's a fabulous unit clerk for us, who is now training at St. Mary's. And she is a new grad RN, and she is doing her training at St. Mary's. She's six months into it. And she will be one of our first staff members that comes on board for OB. So as you can see, we had already started to think about this, but it's being pushed a lot faster. And so we will be meeting and deciding how we can move forward to help with this staffing crisis that could be hitting us all pretty soon. Or it's already hitting us in OB, so.
So Jan, do we have any relationships with any of the universities around to... And we provide, you know, clinicals, we have them, what are our relationships?
Yeah, I have a relationship with UNR. I happen to have a colleague there that I've known for a long time, who's one of the instructors there. So I even speak to the leadership class every semester. And so every time I speak, I've been asked, oh, can we get a job at Tahoe Forest when we graduate? You know, and it's always, oh, sorry, you got to get that two years' experience. We will change that. So yes, we're gonna start reaching out to our local UNR, TMCC, Kerrigan, Carson, Western College. Yeah, which is the college out of Carson. So yeah, we will start reaching out to them, and we will even be willing to do clinicals.
Well, that was gonna be my question. I know that, you know, there's a downside to having to necessarily proctor all of these students. But the upside is if they have a positive experience while they're within our walls, that can greatly, greatly move us forward, so. And the clinical rotations is the place to start.
Yeah, and we're unfortunate that a lot of our unit clerks in what we call PCT, Patient Care Techs, or our ER techs, a lot of them are all going either onto PA programs or to nursing programs. So those employees worked for us for two to three years. We already know what type of employee they are. We know that they've, you know, been able to do a great job as a tech or a PCT. And then when they graduate from nursing school, that's the staff that we really want to retain, because right now, we lose that staff. They go off for two years, and we hope that they come back, but we don't get many of them back.
And we are participating in the career nights and all of that.
Yeah, that's what we've talked about, that we'll be getting information out to the high schools, both at Truckee, North Tahoe, and Incline, to be able to get that information out and even talk about a volunteer program. So we're thinking about it all. We just have to get the group together and decide how we actually want to move forward with it.
Wonderful.
Also, Jan, as you're meeting with these groups, the biggest concern I think there is in terms of nursing education is the limitations that are set on how many students a faculty member can have, how many students can be in a rotation, how many students they can accept into a program. And it just seems that that's where the hangup is. There aren't, I don't know who they're using as far as faculty because there is a minimum requirement, you have to have at least your masters. And for a long time, they were requiring a doctorate. So again, there are so many steps to get those numbers out there and trying to work together, looking at, how do we change the curriculum in nursing so that we can do a lot in the lab, the simulated labs, and bring them into a clinical position at some point so they can have that interaction with a patient? And I think that's the key, is that they need that despite having a lab that they might have the simulation in.
Yeah, correct, and that was one of the things discussed at this summit too, is as hard as we're having a hard time getting bedside nursing, they are also having a hard time getting instructors. So that's also limiting the number of students they can accept into the programs.
So again, looking outside the box, are we gonna do without doing the traditional faculty member with eight students in a clinical rotation? Because there aren't that many hospitals, and who's gonna travel to Winnebago for a clinical rotation? So again, I was interested to see if there is some further information coming out of that because it's definitely a crisis across the country with nursing right now. And everybody wants to be a nurse practitioner. They don't want the hospital, the bedside nurse.
Or PA.
Yeah.
Right, all right. Let me ask you one other thing, Jan, if I may. At one point in time, there was a number, and I don't remember what it was, but it was the time it took from graduating a nurse to when they are truly effective on the floor. And it was a longer time than I realized. And so certainly, one of the benefits of growing our own is that they, you can shorten that learning curve by truly growing our own and knowing how we practice and what we do and what have you, and it increases their effectiveness that much more.
Right, that's what, so if we take some of these PCTs or techs, and after they become an RN, yes, it will be a lot shorter because, number one, they've been in our system, they know our policies, they know the way things run, and that is probably, you know, a good four or five months of a new grad just learning that portion.
Right, wonderful. Good luck.
Well, thanks, Jan, that was the reason why I wanted to pull your report is to hear more about what was coming out of that meeting. And I'm happy to hear that. There are some strategies being put in place, so thank you again.
Thank you.
And then, the second report I pulled was the Chief Human Resource Officer, and I wanted to see if he had a little bit more insight on... Well, there are a hundred and thirty current job openings at Tahoe Forest, and I wanted to hear more about them, and how long have some of them been posted and have not gotten that response? And are we looking at trends of where these open positions are, and what are thoughts on them?
Yeah, so we actually have about a hundred and forty positions open right now. The number changes every day, right? But luckily, we've got about twenty-nine people that are in the onboarding stage right now, so those will, you know, come off the list. You know, we have some positions that stay on... I've got one position that's been on there since 2020, and the reason for that is because it's almost like a rotation, right? They might have five positions open, and then they'll fill three, and then they'll still have two open, and then somebody else leaves, so they have three open. So it's kind of a, it's almost like an ongoing challenge in some of our frontline staff positions. And, you know, these positions, they're everywhere. We're seeing, you know, some positions like CLS, for example, that position has been posted since June fourteenth, and we've gotten zero applicants. You know, so that's just them signing up for our work.
What is the CLS stand for?
I'm sorry, yeah, Clinical Lab Scientist. Yeah. You know, a lot of these positions, for example, we've got twenty-five open positions in the multi-specialty clinics in all of them. A lot of medical assistance. So much like we were talking about with nursing, that we're gonna be growing our own, we're doing the same thing in medical assistance. We're starting to create, work with and create our own programs. Same with phlebotomy in some of those positions. So it sounds like a scary number, but with the size we are, you know, it's really not as bad as many other health systems. As Jan mentioned earlier, we're in a lot better shape. You know, we have, we're down to one recruiter right now, and she's managing it really well. Other positions like the access center, you know, we often have positions in that role, or open positions in that job because many of them use it almost as a stepping stone as well. They come into the system, and then they find other jobs elsewhere. You know, in our district, thankfully. So although it sounds like a scary... So although it sounds like a scary number, it's not like, you know, five years ago when we had thirty, it's, i- it is a manageable number and we're, we're getting through it. We are, you know, having some trouble in some areas in, in nursing, like Women and Family. We're struggling to get a Women and Family nurse right now, even the traveling agencies, try and get them in there. And we're, you know, we're really taking out all the stops to try to get those really tough positions filled.
And so what do you think the toughest positions are?
Well, you know, it's, it's tricky because there's diff, they have different reasons for toughness. So like a medical assistant, for example, right now, it's really challenging because most of them are coming from the Reno market and most of them have, you know, they don't want to make the commute to Truckee. You know, so that's, that's a challenge. When we opened up our, our center in Reno so that we could have office staff in Reno, that significantly increased our applicant pool. For example, an access separate, access center rep one, full-time position with the sign-on bonus has been posted since July of 2020. Since that time, there's only been two hundred and seventy applicants that have entered into that pool. The same position for the Reno office has only been posted since September of 2021 and it's had three hundred and sixty-seven applicants. So that just shows you that that really helped us, you know, get some of those positions filled.
Okay. So do, do you think that Sierra College would be an option to do some of that? The technical, like the phlebotomist and, it, it seems to me that there used to be a program there that helped us a lot.
Yeah, you know, we, we are looking at partnerships with Sierra College and, and different ways we can utilize them in the Truckee campus, you know, and there, I think their medical assistant program was down in Roseville. We had an EMT program here in Truckee and certainly that's, I think, still active. So we will be working with them also just to utilize their space. They do allow for us to rent their space and we can hire our own instructors and put people through those programs.
Alright, so thank you. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to follow up when you're finished.
Oh, okay, I'm going on to another point on Alex's report. And that had to do with Alliance Physical Therapy is now, is that included in the number of new hires that you posted as six, what, sixty-nine?
No, it, it, that's a great question. It's not. They were onboarded on July first and July first was not part of these numbers. There was eighty-one total Alliance employees that were onboarded.
Okay. Alright, so the sixty-nine are in other departments altogether?
Yeah.
And physicians are not counted as part of our employees when you talk about hiring and terminations?
They, they are now. Yep. If they're an employed physician, they're a part of this report.
Okay. And then the, the last question has more to do with the, the terminations. And it was interesting to look at it that there are, in terms of other and other jobs is the highest of number of people leaving. And so do you have any insight on, on that kind of? I know that you can just checkbox is correct. They don't have to write anything in.
Yeah, you know, the other category is when they don't write anything in for the most part, or it doesn't fit into one of those buckets, but it's, most of the time, it's because they didn't fill out that, that checkbox. Other job is just that. It's other job. It, it's, you know, it could be that they're, they're going on to be a nurse. It could be that they're, you know, there, there's so many different things. But it could, you know, a lot of times we find that people leave and then, you know, they get another job. You know, the grass is always greener on the other side, right? And then they come back and sometimes we use that opportunity to let that person depart.
I just wondered if you heard any undercurrents. When, when people start leaving, you start hearing things on the side of why they left. They might have written one thing, but there's something else going on and then you can see a trend happening.
Well, we do, we do exit reports with employees when we can and we do monitor for that. So if we start seeing a department that has particularly high turnover, unexpectedly high turnover, then we'll start to investigate why that is. Sometimes, you know, we've had to go in and help management through some challenges and, and, you know, help them find better ways to manage. And sometimes we've had to make other changes in the department to try to increase the satisfaction. A lot of times though, it's, it's those employees that are looking for that promotion, right? And I, and I don't blame them, you know, a lot of times it's, it's just that. So it, it sometimes terminates, you know, voluntary terminations are not necessarily a bad thing. Sometimes it's a good thing, but, you know, certainly we try to retain the, the good employees and, and, you know, I think we do a pretty good job of it here. As Jan mentioned earlier, you know, in, in nursing in particular, we haven't had much of a struggle in nursing, but we are starting to see those, those strains now. And so we'd like to get ahead of it before it becomes a real problem. But I will say, the more and more I talk to some of these folks that are leaving, they may have had another job, but they found the other job because of the commute, because of the gap in cost prices and because of just normal cost of living. And, and, you know, that's a challenge.
Are there any other comments or questions for Alex? Mary?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Alex, as long as we're talking about personnel issues. And I, you know, I thought it would probably be a good time, you know, with Louis and Gary on the line too. I'm just wondering if you could say anything about the physician compensation discussions right now and sort of characterize those for us, so let us know what's going on.
Well, it's probably better that Scott or Louis talk about that. So I'll turn it over to Louis. Looks like he's unmuted.
Yeah, and I, I definitely invite Dr. Gary Gray to get involved as well because we're having a number of conversations. You know, we, we recognize that there's some concerns in terms of physician compensation. However, we work with a partner called ECG. I think all of you are familiar with that firm. And we really look to see, you know, benchmark our compensation packages as well as productivity, productivity packages against other providers throughout the nation, specific to specialties and primary care, hospital-based and so forth. You know, I think that there's areas that we're going to explore a bit more, have some one-on-one conversations. But just overall, looking at the numbers, I think that the health system is in a, a very, I think the exact words that were shared with us today were that we provide very competitive compensation packages to providers. So that's the overall theme. But I think, you know, every individual is going to have some different discussion points with us and we're happy to continue to keep sitting down with providers one-on-one and discuss, you know, what their specific challenges are and how we can continue to learn more of, of, you know, their point of view. So it's an open dialogue and, and I'm happy to hear Dr. Gray's thoughts as well as Scott Baker's thoughts on it.
Sure. Good evening, folks. I have very little to add.
Sorry.
It's okay. I think this will be, you know, this will be a multi-month engagement. You know, I think there are pockets that will need to be, you know, specific pockets of physicians that will need to be, you know, addressed. And, you know, I'm hopeful that what will emerge will be a refined, you know, very refined, competitive compensation package for, for our docs.
Can Mary, does that answer your question? Okay, you're on mute, remember.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I guess, I, I, yeah, I guess for now, I mean, I, I'm, I'm assuming that things are amicable and what have you as we move forward.
Yeah, you know, I, I would classify things being amicable. I, I think, you know, things have changed. Obviously, cost of living has changed, inflation has made some changes. I think the doctors want to feel valued. I think it's our job to support them in terms of them feeling valued as we do with all of our employees. But I think we have to use, you know, real-world data and some established partners like ECG who use MGMA and AGMA, and those are firms that look at, you know, physician compensation packages across the United States. And they really look at productivity as well in terms of, you know, the busiest providers potentially or the higher compensated providers. So they, they really look at, you know, wide breadth of data. But I think, you know, right now, it's us as administration, as leaders in the organization, sitting and chatting with the providers, find out how things may have changed for them, at least from their perception, and find areas that we can build value and find some commonality. You know, I think Dr. Gray just quickly touched on the idea of, you know, refining some of these compensation arrangements. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's, you know, additional dollars. We just may have to look at how they're set up, established, maybe level of autonomy they might have within their schedules and so forth, so. But again, we, we want to be very clear that, you know, we, we want to really keep access at the center of this entire conversation, right? So we want to make sure that we have compensation structures that really promote a, a high level of access in the community as well. And they are linked, so, you know, you can make decisions that might decrease access and thus, you know, on the reverse, you can make decisions in terms of compensation structures that might increase access. So we're looking at things a multitude of different ways, using partners, making sure that the docs are at the table as well and that they're having conversations with ECG. I think we're calling them, that they're not necessarily called town halls, but they're just feedback arrangements that they can sit and talk with ECG and their team. So, you know, I hope that answers your question, Director Brown, but there's a lot of work that the AC and leadership here in the hospital are, are working on right now with the providers.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for the update.
Yeah. Thank you, Louis, because again, access and patient experience are two key factors that the board is interested in, in keeping positive. So again, working with the docs, working with Harry and working with Dr. Gray and Scott Baker will certainly help look at those kind of criteria for our patients. So thank you again for the input. I didn't mean to start all this discussion, but I thought it was important to talk about what Jan had in her report and what Alex had in his because it has to do with staffing and it has to do with the shortages and how that might impact us and what we can do coactively before we get in that spiral hole and have to cut services because we don't have the people to do them. So thank you for that.
Since this can of worms has been opened, let's clarify a question.
You know, Director McGarry, I, I think this, the physician aspect isn't really in the four corners of Alex's report and, and I do, I have spoken with Harry briefly and I, I know this is something he wants to talk to the board about when he's back.
Okay. Good to know. Then we'll be talking, talking to Harry.
Put the, put the worms back in the can.
Yeah. And then seal the can for sure. Any committee reports? I know Finance Committee met, but we've heard pretty much other reports from that meeting. Anything else new?
Well, I should mention that in addition to reviewing Chandler's work, we also talked about accounts receivable. Mary and I continue to, to monitor that. There's, you know, there's fits and starts on the progress to get that as smooth as we, everyone would like to see it. So Mary and I feel we're going to continue once a quarter. Didn't we say, Mary, once a quarter, we'll take a look at AR and just to see what kind of progress we're making to smooth that out.
Okay.
So I'm gonna try and circumvent what David said, not open up the can of worms. But it, it seems like there are some, some meaningful issues going on with physicians that could affect access, could affect our ability to recruit in the future, those kinds of things. Those types of things aren't present in any of the reports, from either CMO, from either HR. That's a point I think is appropriate.
Michael, I think that's something, yeah. I was gonna say, I think that's something that we as a board can talk to Harry about. And again, we'll be meeting in our retreat in September, I think it's September, and those are the issues that can be brought forth. Right now, we're on committees unless you want to bring it to a committee and have that discussed there. How about any other committees that met?
Yeah, so two that I could report out on. One, the foundation had a meeting this month, some, oops, sorry, gotta go back to a different screen. Some quick updates there. The year-end fundraising was just north of one point one million, so a very successful year for the foundation there. And then a couple of events, one at Shaffer's Mill, that was a donor appreciation, a great event attended by, looks like just over a hundred people. You give an opportunity for donors to meet physicians and other members of staff. A number of large gifts were announced in the meeting, which is always great to hear. And then a second event was held, Spirit of Giving, which I think is worth sharing with everyone. It was to honor Josh and Lindsay Hall, who, through an unfortunate personal event or a family event that they endured, they created a foundation which has been of great help to, to the hospital and, and others that might encounter situations like they did. I mean, from them, nothing but glowing praise for the care they received. They felt they could do more to make sure other families get the same or even better care if, if encountering, you know, circumstances they did. So that was a, a great event. I will just share, there were some comments by Hospital Foundation Board members saying, hey, it would be great to see more district board members at these types of events. So one, if you're not getting information about them, or if you're not getting invites for them, let's surface that. Two, if I'm just sharing that, just a messenger on that, then, you know, if you can attend these, it's great for, for the donors and others to see district board members, to get a chance to, to talk. So that's on the foundation and the Community Health Ad-Hoc Committee, we had our second meeting. Still in the phases of gathering data, we had a, we did a deep dive of the Community Health Needs Assessment, looked at trends all the way from 2011 up until 2021. And we reviewed some of the, the senior care data that we have. We looked at impact that the wellness neighborhood has had over the last decade as well, programs that have been working, things that maybe have been, been challenged. And you're really still building towards identifying where the, the areas of opportunity might be. At our next meeting, most likely in mid-September, we're going to be looking at grading, you know, we're gonna be, we're, we're seeking examples of community partnerships, not only in our community, but also communities around the country that we might emulate. And that'll be the, sort of the third leg of, of framing out the, the information gathering for the committee. And then in the, the subsequent meetings, we'll be looking to really narrow down to a, a small number, you know, two or three opportunities where we feel we can have meaningful impact in the next twelve to eighteen months. So good progress, but still, still gathering information.
Thank you so much. And I, I want to just reiterate, and I'll get to you in a minute, Dale, about attending the events for the, that the foundation puts on. If you have not getting reports on them, please let us know because, again, the more we're present, the more the foundation will be working on and helping us out. I know that the timing hasn't always been the greatest and getting, especially this summer, being able to be out and people wanting to see each other. So again, there'll probably be other ones coming up and we would really appreciate it if you extend yourself and attend.
Yeah, you can attend those community events. A majority of the board can attend those. You just need to be cognizant not to discuss district business amongst the majority of you.
Yeah. Could, could I, we hear a clarification on that because Bob, I'm not sure you got an invitation to those. I, Michael and I attended both of the last two donor appreciation events and we were the only two. They're wonderful events and they're a great way to yak with the public and, and the foundation boards. And so I, they're a fun thing to attend. I hope you're getting an invitation.
I will, I will make sure. So, you know, Carly's fantastic, so if there's any invitation that's been missed, it's, you know.
She'll get it. Wendy, Wendy's your right-hand woman and she'll get it done.
Okay.
All right. Well, thanks, Michael, for the reports. Anybody else or any last closing comments from our board? All right. If there's no further, if there's no further discussion, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Web, so much for everything. Thanks, Alex, for coming and staying. You too, Jan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.